To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to our Monday, December 9th School Board meeting. We will begin with our agenda, approval, deletions, additions. Dr. Baracco.
Thank you, Mrs. Seuss. You do have a revised agenda at your workstation and that revision is under Roman numeral seven three, seven A three. That's a professional leave request and under seven B one, some personnel recommendation updates.
Motion to approve. We have a motion from Mrs. Kelly. And I will second for Mr. Marshall. Any discussion or questions? Hearing none, we have to do individual roll call. Mr. Marshall.
Nothing to report, no activity.
Mrs. Talent, aye. Mrs. Kelly, aye. And I am an aye also. Is there any correspondence this evening, Mrs. Kelly?
There is not, Mrs. Seuss, thank you.
Thank you. So we're going to move right into our official school board business topics, consent agenda. Dr. Baracco.
Thank you again. Seek board approval for the minutes from our executive session and regular board meetings on November 18th. Also seek board approval for the claims payroll and extracurricular expenditures that you received in your packets last week.
Motion from Ms. Talent. I'll second. Second from Ms. Kelly. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none. Mr. Marshall.
Aye.
Ms. Talent?
Aye.
Ms. Kelly?
Aye.
And I am an aye. Motion passes. And there is no public comments regarding action items, so we're going to move right into our official school board business topics, regular agenda. Dr. Baracco.
All right. Well, first I want to thank everybody for coming out this evening for some special recognition of both students and staff members. And first up, we have Erin Novak, principal at Lake Central High School, I believe, is going to talk to us about our Veterans Day and War Memorial Committees.
All right. Good evening. Good evening, Board, Central Office Administrators, and everybody who's here this evening. Thank you for coming out. Mr. Stanish, Mr. Stanish is one of our assistant principals, and he is the one who spearheads our Veterans Day Assembly every year. And we won a very wonderful award this year. And I want to take time to bring our Veterans Day Committee down. There's many of them here. So anyone who is working with the Veterans Day Committee and our War Memorial Committee, if you guys can come down just for a minute before we share all this great news with everybody. So we have a lot of faculty members. We have some retired faculty members. We have some community members, Mr. and Mrs. Ziegloitz. We have some of our Cub Scout or Boys Scout leaders that come back and work with us. It really takes a village to make a program this big, so wonderful and so meaningful. So this year, we, we applied for an award through the Indiana Department of Education, and it's called the Purple Star Award. And the Purple Star Award, you have to meet certain criteria, so they don't just give it out for any old reason. The school has to have a designated point of contact for military families, and that person is Megan Grayman. And Ashley Klein also helps in our guidance department. And Megan had to go through some specific training to be designated as the point of contact. The school has a dedicated webpage to provide recognition and resources for service members, veterans, and students and families. The school hosts a military recognition event that demonstrates military friendly culture, which is our Veterans Day Assembly. The school has a display recognizing service members, veterans, and/or students and families. We have our War Memorial, which is a work in progress. Phase one is done, but we are working on phase two. It's by door A. If you've ever walked into door A, please take a moment and, you know, look at our War Memorial. It features all of Lake Central's graduates who have served, who paid the ultimate sacrifice with their life. So it's a very meaningful memorial, and we're very happy to have it here in our school. And then military service members and their immediate family members who meet the minimum qualifications for job openings within the school will be guaranteed a job interview. So overall, the award means that we are very hospitable to our, our veterans and our military families. And then we also had to ask for school board approval to submit our application. And these lovely people came in and signed the form and helped us get that all done. So without further ado, I am happy to announce that Lake Central High School was awarded the Purple Star Award from the Indiana Department of Education for all of their work. You guys come down.
Hey, what are you doing here?
What?
What are you doing here?
I don't know. What are you doing?
Looks like a loser.
Who's taking the picture?
No, no.
There's Pub in the purple shirt.
Briefly.
Hi, my name is Marty Ziegloitz, past state commander. My wife, past president of American Legion. And I submitted Lake Central for a special state award and national award, but don't know what's going to happen yet. Everything takes time. But one thing I would like to say is thank Erin and Joe. They do a wonderful job with this program, and it really, really means a lot to all the veterans. The 400 people that were there just cannot believe what a great student body you have. And thank you very much.
Just one quick thing. When we found out we won the award, I said, let's have the whole committee come and we can show them and bring them to the board meeting. I didn't realize it was going to be this busy of a board meeting. So thank you all. Thank you for standing in the back of the room. We really appreciate you being here. And thank you to all of our committee members for making this such a wonderful part of our school. Thank you.
Excuse me, Mrs. Novak and committee, yes, thank you very much for that. And when you mentioned veteran friendly, this corporation, every single school is so veteran friendly that is beyond belief. And so following through with what you said, I'd like to congratulate all of our schools for being veteran friendly. And look at what Mr. Clark did years and years and years ago with being veteran friendly when they did the research on the veterans. So thanks to everyone for that.
Okay, next we're going to recognize our elementary spell bowl teams, beginning with Watson Elementary and Principal Michelle Lavin.
Good evening, everyone. At this time, I would like to invite my two spell bowl coaches down. We are excited tonight. The Watson Spell Bowl team competed in the Indiana Academic Spell Bowl in November. Watson placed fourth in the state with a division, in their yellow division, with a score of 40. We are very proud of the team. And at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Mrs. Guzek, who's going to announce our students.
Our first student is Kayden Albig. Come on down. Next is Alexa Bantian. Mariah Jeffries. Reed McKay. Penelope Ortiz. And Madison Palivas.
Congratulations to our entire team. I'd also like to recognize the parents of these students. So if we have parents or guardians with our kids tonight, could you please just stand or wave your hand at us so we can see who you are? We appreciate you.
Go ahead. Our next team is from Bibich, and so we'll introduce Principal Allison Petralia.
Good evening. We also have some exciting news about spell bowls. So on November 18th, Bibich won first place in the yellow division and third place in the state by correctly spelling 40 words. We had several nearly perfect rounds. So students, before we have you come up here and get your certificates, I'm going to ask you to stand when I say your name. Shownuk Abianker, Zachary Schaaf, Kylan Hwan, Sammy Moss, and Dammy Foliday. We are very proud of you. So I will invite Ms. Snow and Ms. O'Rourke to help me, please. We're so proud of the hard work and many hours of studying that you put in, parents and students. Thank you so much.
All right. So when you guys come up, make sure you shake hands with our board members over here too, okay? You've got the list of the people though. All right. First up, we got Shonuk Abianker. Next is Solana Kaia. And Kyra Khan. It's a twofer. Dammy Foliday. Zachary Schaaf. And then Philip Willis.
And now we'd like to recognize the Protsman Spell Bowl team. Principal Kathy Sapida will start that presentation.
Good evening, everyone. I am so proud to be up here. The Protsman Spell Bowl team placed third in our division at the competition on November 18th and in the top 10 in the state. We are so proud of all of their hard work and all the parents' support. And my two coaches were just wonderful. We did a little mock spelling competition before with some teachers against the team, and the team did beautifully, kind of put the teachers in their place. But it was really great. And so first, I'd like to introduce my two coaches for all their, they were just wonderful, their time and dedication. Mrs. Ballinger, one of our kindergarten teachers. And Mrs. Korea, one of our fourth grade teachers. And they will be presenting the certificates.
Next, we have Emma Heim. Next, we have Amret Pete Cower. Next, we have Isabel Magallanes. We have Swamini Patel. Mia, Mia Rowan. And Gian Trivedi.
high school, and I'll introduce Mr. Chris Enyard, Athletic Director.
Our first team is our girls' golf team. I'm going to have Coach Gurnack and Coach Olenkam come up to talk about their season briefly.
All right. Thanks, Mr. Enyard, and thank you to the school board for the invitation tonight. Just a few things about our girls' golf team and our season this year. We went 17-0, so we marked an undefeated nine-hole match season. The girls won three invites, the LC invite, the Culver invite, and the biggest regular season invite win was the DAC Championship, which we actually won by 49 strokes, which is quite a, quite a few. That helped us win the DAC outright. We also won the sectional. And then the girls won the regional for the third time in school history. And lastly, we advanced to the state finals where we finished 15th. At the beginning of the year, we were unranked, so to finish 15th in the state was a pretty good accomplishment. the year, we were unranked, so to finish 15th in the state was a pretty good accomplishment. All right, girls, come on up when I call you. Our first athlete is Maya Parks. Our next athlete is Alex Schilling. All right, and then the next five athletes were staples in our varsity lineup, and actually all five of them made the all-conference team. There's only 10 that make it, so it's quite an accomplishment to get all five of them in there. Our first athlete is Peyton Schilling. Victoria Schilling. Piper Urbansky. Our next senior was also selected to the ICGSA Academic All-State Team, and that's Macy Urbansky. And our last athlete was voted the DAC MVP. That's the third time someone from Lake Central has won that in history, so Ally Hupenthal.
If the girls' golf parents could stand up or raise their hands, we'd like to thank them for all their hard work and getting their kids to practice on time. Next, we're going to do our girls' cross-country team. Coach Garten and Coach Prick, come on down. Oh, Anne Kajawa.
All right, this season was a very special one. This team's the fastest team in school history with an average of 18-18 at the state meet. Our varsity girls won every single regular season meet. They were DAC champions and were led by Macy Thompson, who was the individual champion, and that's the first time in school history that LC XC has won the team and individual title. They were they were sectional champs for the sixth year in a row and the 29th time overall, and they were led by Macy Thompson, who was the individual champion. They were regional champions for the 20th time overall, and they were led by Macy Thompson again, who was the individual champion. Then they went on to the state meet where they placed third overall. Macy, Lana, and Chloe all placed in the top 25, making them a part of the all-state team. The following girls made up our varsity team and postseason roster. Alexis Bonchik. Lana Brugeman. Anna Domingo. Essie Gonzalez. Roxanne Martinez. Alexa Neal. Aubrey Neal. Chloe Neal. Marina Negretti. Caitlin Smith. Mackenzie Smith. And Macy Thompson. And I also wanted to thank our parents. All the support that they've given our girls this year has meant a lot to us.
And our last, our last fall program for this evening, our boys' cross-country team, Coach Rhodey and, I didn't see Coach Thompson, come on down.
Real quick, these young men did not win a single cross-country meet until they pulled off something we've never done at Lake Central in 22 years. We've never won the Duelland Conference Championship. These guys pulled it out at the end, and really did a fantastic job. We were sectional champions for the four straight years, five times in the last six years. They qualified for state where they ended up finishing 19th, which was about three places higher than we were supposed to be. As proud as we are of these young men and their talents on the cross-country course, even more proud of their academics. We had four young men who were named the IAT CCC Academic All-State Honorable Mention. I'd just like them to stand real quick. That's Owen Thompson. Owen Goldar. Brandon Andre. And Dom Negretti. We had two young men who were named first-team Academic All-State. That was Christopher Garner and Evan Smith. So if we could have you guys come up when we call your name. Brian Craig. Christopher Garner. Good boy. Owen Calder. Congratulations, buddy. Ethan Gonzalez. Dom Negretti. Jacob Sullivan. The next one, the next young man was runner-up at the DAC, sectional champion as a junior, and sixth place at the semi-state, finishing 32nd at state, I'm sorry, ninth, yeah, 32nd at state, is Ben Pershan. Lucas Petrovic. PR, Patrick Ryan. Evan Smith. Owen Thompson. And Eli Turpin. Will the parents please stand up for these young men? Thank you so much, everybody. You've got to bring Mrs. Novak back down.
And now I'd like to bring Mrs. Novak back down to recognize our National Merit Scholarship Program and our College Board National Recognition.
All right, first, we'll start with our National Merit Commended students. But before I do that, I just want to say, you know, it's neat to see the elementary students winning the Spell Bowl and being recognized for their work because those students ultimately end up here, and those Spell Bowl champions are probably going to be in our National Merit pile of students to recognize someday. So it's really nice to see the younger kids as well. All right, so I have National Merit Commended students. These students scored highly on the 2023 PSAT test, placing them within the top 2% to 3% of test takers nationwide. But they did not move on to the semifinalist round, but ultimately, being in the top 2% to 3% of all nationwide test takers is definitely something to be extremely proud of, and we are very proud of them. So I'd like to call them up, please. Charlotte Bernard. Colin Gallagher. Elaine Grimm. Timothy Schmittl. Mila Stoichovik. Was I kind of close?
Kind of close?
No. Forgive me. Ophelia Thomas. Anya Noel Villa-Vasanzio. Congratulations, Anya. All right, now we have our national recognition from College Board. The students in the following categories are eligible for this award. If you're a first-generation college student, meaning that your parent did not attend college, black or African-American, Hispanic or Latino, indigenous or native, and/or attend in a school in a rural area or small town. So those students, if they scored in the top 10% of test takers from their award program in Indiana, or earned a 3 or higher on two or more AP exams in ninth or 10th grade, and earned a cumulative GPA of a B+ or higher, pardon me, that's why I needed a cheat sheet, that was too many things to remember, then they are eligible for this award. And I have a very thick folder here, so again, we are extremely proud of these students for their achievements, and I'll start calling them. First up is Brooklyn Alvarez. Nathan Amesqua. Congratulations. Atira Anekwe. Gabriela Arroyo. Edward Alinskyz. Jada Barrow. Gianna Bennett. Caitlin Bice. Taylor Borowski. Alexander Castrión. Hector Chavez. Ethan Condit. Samatip Dansar. Michonne Dustin. Alec Egert. Precious Fassania. Coral Favella. Gabriela Gall. Milani Garcia. Owen Goldar. Abigail Grunchik. Olivia Guerrero. Angel Harrigan. Ally Hernandez. Isabella Hernandez. Jaclyn, I'm sorry, Jackson Hose. Uh-oh, I missed that one. I should have worn my glasses. Jackson, congratulations. Jacob Jongsma. Austin Jasma. Yovanna Krajulik. Jessica Lopez. Naomi Lopez. David Mansour.
Into an extra classroom to create space. Our reading specialists and our counselor operated out of tiny offices. And so that resulted in, as we had two new neighborhoods come online in St. John, specifically Walden Clearing and Morning Crest, we assigned those two neighborhoods to Watson prior to any homes being constructed so that we could have better balance in our elementary schools. The Bibbitch Elementary expansion was in response partly to this, but partly because of other developments in the territory that go to Bibbitch, and that would be mainly the preserve. This year, we did see an increase in population at Watson, but a sizable decrease in population at Coling. And so as that factor comes into play, it led us to minimizing the number of neighborhoods that we are reassigning for next school year. So this next bullet point, most families prefer not to switch schools. We totally recognize that. However, for us to do our fiduciary responsibility as a school district, we have to maximize the space and use the space where it is. We've never promised people that they would be going to school in the town in which they So, you know, as I mentioned earlier, our student enrollment data for both elementary and middle school needs to be considered. We did want to move people to make sure that there was enough space in every one of our schools that in most conditions, we'd be able to allow families who want to switch schools to do so. So for the last handful of years, we have not been allowing people to transfer into Coling or Clark. It is our belief that next year, in most cases, we'll be able to do that. And I say in most cases because the last point on this sheet is, we're not going to guarantee it. If the elementary sizes in a certain school are at our capacity, we're not going to allow a transfer to make that, those classes go over our projected sizes. As long as there's space, though, we expect that we'll be able to approve that. And then it's important to know that for anybody whose neighborhood gets moved this year, they're going to be allowed to continue at the school they started. They're just going to have to provide their own transportation. And I'll get to the transportation piece in a second. So we're going to take some pressure off Protsman by moving a couple neighborhoods. We're going to take a little bit of pressure off Watson. We're going to utilize a little of the space that we created at Bibbitch. And then after we move what I'm going to call the Islands, and you'll see that on the map a little bit later, we'll share what the numbers are in terms of who actually gets impacted, what the numbers are. And it's not that significant. It's certainly nowhere what we thought it would be a year ago. So the other piece that's important to note is that the neighborhoods that we've selected, they help us with our school transportation, with our bus routes. They simplify pickup and drop off of students. And I think it's on a later slide, but the neighborhoods that we moved originally were in the territory where we're putting them back to. So what are we moving? We're moving Castlewood and Castleview. This is the only Protsman neighborhood south of US 30. When Dr. Emrick was superintendent, it was part of Bibbitch. Due to needing the space, they sectioned off a rectangle south of 30 and moved those two neighborhoods to Protsman. Morning Crest and Walden Clearing, you'll see on the map in a second, very close to Clark Middle School. In fact, when we placed them at Watson and Grimmer, I had people saying, "I can see that school from my yard, but you're sending me to a different school." And I said, "I understand that, but Coling is at its capacity, and we need to do something." And so this is our best solution right now. We live in a community that can be tax-averse at times. We're not going to create extra capacity in one part of the town when we have space elsewhere. The Continental is the final neighborhood that's being reassigned, although currently we don't have any students there. You'll see that on the map. It's a little box that's in the, going to Bibbitch right now, but we're going to make it part of Coling again. So here's the map that I refer to. And if you look up here, this is Castlewood and Castleview. You should have that in your packet up there on the, and so that one will now go down to Bibbitch instead of north on the other side of Route 30. This is the Continental here. It's a, there are some beautiful homes in there, but that will, that will go back to Coling. And this is that other rectangle that we talk about, Walden Clearing and Morning Crest. And if you can see, one of the problems down here, this, this very large territory is all the Coling territory. And I share that because there's probably going to be a time in the future as some of this stuff gets built out, the areas east of Renaissance, where we may have to, again, consider moving some neighborhoods. And, you know, it just depends on how that plays out. So 186 students currently, as of last week, are impacted. They, they live in one of these four neighborhoods. Seventy, whoops, what did I do there? I'm too quick for myself. Seventy-five of those students are at the high school. So out of 186, 75 live in these territories that are already at the high school. Twenty-five attend Kaler from Castlewood and Castleview. Well, it doesn't matter what elementary school they go to and die, or they're still going to end up at Kaler. So that takes 100 out of the equation. It leaves us with 86. From Protsman to Bibbitch, there are 31 students. I consider 19 of those to be impacted because 12 of them are fourth graders. So those Protsman fourth graders were going to Coling next year anyway. So 19 students are impacted in the Castlewood, Protsman to Bibbitch territory. And then in the Walden Clearing, Morning Crest, 36 students, one's a pre-K student. And now I will include all 36 impacted this time, even though 10 of them are fourth graders. Those 10 students, if they, you know, when they go to Clark, they're going to be with a new peer group. So they are impacted. And then Walden Clearing, Morning Crest, the current Grimmer students that are going to Clark, 19 students, six of whom are eighth graders. So they're going to high school either way. So 13 students from Grimmer are impacted in terms of going to Clark for the rest of their middle school career. Now, again, the students may finish at Grimmer if they choose to, but they'll have to provide their own transportation, only sending one set of buses into those neighborhoods. And if I go back to the map, you can see how, if we're bringing a bus in and we're picking up all these other people, how easy it is just to go down a few streets there and catch them all and take them either to Clark or Coling instead of bringing a bus from this other territory down and circling through. So it does save us a little bit of money with transportation. Hopefully saves us maybe a half a route or a, two halves of a route or something, and we can use all the help we can get in that department. But it's just important that I shared on this slide that we do recognize that some people are impacted. And some of those people like where they are, and they've called me on the phone, and I've already spoken with them. I've shared that they can stay, and I'm sorry that we can't provide transportation. 20 years ago, when we had an abundance of bus drivers, some people who worked in central office then told me they, they were able to send two different buses into the same neighborhood because they had enough people. We struggle to have enough drivers every day. So anybody out there who is looking for work, we have some bus driving openings. Our mechanics and our director end up driving a lot to fill those voids. So that's the impact. We recognize it. We don't love it, but we also know that it's going to be better for us in the long run. Again, as I mentioned before, realignment may be necessary again in the future. What it means to be a consolidated school district is that we're not tied or limited on where we send students to school. We're going to utilize our spaces as efficiently as possible. And then, you know, the other caveat is this last piece that, keep hitting the wrong button, that there are a couple sizable neighborhoods being planned east of Renaissance in the St. John boundary area. Now, we all know those neighborhoods don't come online with a snap, you know. A contractor may throw up 20 or 25 houses a year, but over the next five to 10 years, we're going to see an increase in the amount of housing, and it will change, you know, the way our students are spread out and the decisions we may have to make. So in summary, declining enrollment at Coling reduced the number of neighborhoods impacted in this realignment. Some rebalancing is accomplished by us moving these four neighborhoods. The neighborhoods that we selected have been part of their new district in the past. So this isn't totally new for them. We do simplify some of our transportation demands, and then changes in enrollment decline will enable us, in most cases, to permit inter-district transfers to all of our schools. So again, I want to mention something about that. It's more likely, if you make that request in the spring, that the answer will be yes. When we get to July and we have a clearer picture of how full certain grade levels are in certain schools and/or other things at possibly the middle schools, you know, we may, we may not be able to accommodate. So with that, I would take any questions from the board about this plan.
How will our families be notified that we'll be affected?
Well, the first thing we're going to do tomorrow is post this presentation on the board, and then we're going to send, I have a list of the people who are impacted, and they're going to get a message from us to view this.
Okay, thank you.
Dr. Malco.
Just wanted to declare, just wanted to clarify, when you say these sizable neighborhoods east of Renaissance, St. John Town or St. John Township, which area is that?
Well, the, the town of St. John has all of the land, including our parcel that was purchased about 15 years ago, and then a little section even on the other side of Blaine is all the town of St. John. So there's not much St. John Township that's not affiliated with the town left over there. The, as I, as I understand it, the tree farm is, is part of Sherrville at this point. There's a strip between what St. John has and the tree farm that is still unincorporated.
There's a strip in there?
Yeah.
Where does that fall? Do you know whereabouts on the map?
Well, it's, it's just east of our property on Blaine, but before the tree farm.
Okay. All right. And I've had, I've had a couple of patrons reach out to me and ask if this decision will need to be board approved?
Yes. So the idea of doing the presentation tonight is that people can weigh in, they can ask questions, and then I'll ask for board approval in January. Not at our org meeting, because we have a lot of other business there, but at the second meeting in January.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, my final item is to seek board approval for the professional leave request that we added to your agenda tonight. That is at your workstation. That is for Mrs. Talent to attend a new board member academy with the Indiana School Board Association on February 1st.
I'll make a motion to approve that. Motion from Ms. Kelly, and I will second that. Any discussion? Hearing none. Mr. Marshall.
Aye.
Dr. Malco.
Aye.
Ms. Talent?
Yes.
Ms. Kelly?
Aye.
And I am an aye. Motion passes. Thank you. And now on to our Assistant Superintendent, Ms. Castaneda.
Thank you. For my first item, I am seeking the board's approval for the personnel recommendations, the revised copy that you received this evening.
I'd like to move for approval of the personnel recommendations.
Motion from Dr. Malco.
Second.
Second from Ms. Talent. Any discussion? Hearing none. Mr. Marshall.
Aye.
Dr. Malco.
Aye.
Ms. Talent?
Aye.
Ms. Kelly?
Aye.
And I am an aye. Motion passes.
Thank you. And for my second item, I would like to bring up Chris Enyard, the high school athletic director, for the high school fall sports report.
So you should have this in your packet. We had 353 total athletes this fall, 123 of them are females, 230 are males. Obviously, football, having 160 kids makes that number pretty askew, but the thing we're always proud about is the amount of academics that our student athletes bring. It keeps creeping up every year, but 139 of those 353 falls athletes were considered scholar athletes, which means they carried a 366 GPA or higher, so almost 40% this year. You heard from the fall, three of our programs had a great year, but we had a great year overall, especially on the girls' side in our conference. If you go by the athletic office, we did create a Dunland Athletic Conference tracker, so we already, we already have the fall down. We're trying to track the winner as it proceeds through there. Trying to win an all-sports standings at the end of the year. The team with the least amount of points, so if you were first, you get one point, second, two points, and so on. But our girls' cross-country and golf teams were both first. Soccer and volleyball were second, so they have, they have six points for the fall, which puts us in first in the standings right there. For the boys, we had cross-country in first. We had football tied it for sixth. Boys soccer was third, and tennis was fourth in the DAC. There are 14 and a half points, which is fourth, only six points back from the first-place team. So if we keep moving forward, hopefully we can get one of those nice plaques to add to our trophy. It's been quite a while since we've had one. I think we have three in our school history. They give one for boys and one for girls every year. Postseason results, girls' cross-country, sectional and regional champions, third place at state. We had three girls as medal all-state teams, led by Macy Thompson, who finished fourth overall in the state. She said if that finish line would have been a little further down, she could have made it to third, but, you know, a great season from all of them. Again, girls' golf, first in sectionals and regionals, advanced to the state. They had a rough day one, but day two, it's, that's a two-day tournament, and day two, they golfed great. So they, I think they were down in 19th after day one. They climbed up to 15th after, on day two, so they had a great, great finish, good experience. Most of those girls are back next year. Same with cross-country. I think we had two seniors on the team, no juniors, and the rest were sophomores and freshmen. Girls' soccer, lost in the sectional semifinals. Girls' volleyball, lost in sectionals. Boys' cross-country were sectional champions and advanced to NCAA state championships. Football, boys' soccer, and boys' tennis, all lost in sectionals at some point. Moving on to our income, gate receipts, we were a little over $97,000 in gate receipts. Advertisements, $5,000. Season passes, 30, just shy of $34,000. That's where we make our money to fund all, everything we try to give for the athletic programs, is in our gate receipts and season passes. That, that pays for weight room equipment, team needs, outside, we don't buy their gear, that's part of their fundraising. A lot of teams will fundraise the money, and if they hit their threshold, the, the players will not pay for any of their team gear that they get. Obviously, football's a little different with 160 kids. It gets quite expensive when a practice pack's almost $400 now. But fall teams and fundraisers made up about $116,000. Concessions, we were just shy of $16,000. Weight room and training room fee, we were at $7,860. We moved that to final forms payment so I can track, send email reminders. We were missing 112 payments last time I looked from the fall. So a total of $275,971.77 was our income from the fall. Expenses, everybody's going up, so game workers, we've increased rates just to try to fill the needs that we have. They were just, they were $19,420. Officials goes up every year, so we were just under $15,000 for that. Field equipment facilities, we were just under $50,000. Equipment and team gear, this is, that's where we look at the team of what they're fundraising, what they put out. And if we compare the $112,536 to what they brought in, they actually, some of them had more money over the years. You kind of bank some, so there was a couple of big purchases that they made, so we actually almost spent as much as we made, and that's what we try to do. One is, all the money that comes in, we try to push it all out unless we're looking for a big-ticket item that we need to save up for. Training room, $10,000, and weight room was $10,000. Concessions, $14,000. Miscellaneous, this is all the hospitality rooms, office flowers, plaques, paper, you name it, it comes from there. It's $12,358 for a total of $232,757.91. Fall always makes more than any other season because we need them to carry, carry us into this winter and in the spring when we have a few seasons that aren't revenue funding. So we need them to pay for, help pay for, cover the cost of the officials that are coming up. And that's everything I've got. Any questions?
I do, Chris. On the first page, when you mentioned the girls, 123, does that include the dance team?
No, dance and cheer are part of the winter.
The winter?
Yep. They start in the fall, they, they'll compete some in the fall, but their season's not finished until the winter, so we don't count them until the winter.
Okay. And I really like your DAC alignment that you have by your office. It's really catchy. A lot of us were looking at that. But, but I was wondering if you would go one step further, and I've asked this several times, but you know what? I'm just going to ask again. It would be so nice if we could have a nice plaque, and not a plaque, but a sign out in the track area, which would include the cross-country and the track, boys and girls in each event. I was at Highland not too long ago, and they, they have a big, sorry about that, big, big one like that, and it has the, the record holders for this, for their conference and for the, no, actually, it's just the record holders for the school. And it's posted out there where people can see it, because people do not come inside the building to see cross-country and track scores. Do you see what I'm saying?
Yeah, you're talking about a record board.
A what?
A record board.
Yeah, just like you did in the hallway for the DAC, but to make that into track and cross-country would be so nice for our kids if it could be out there posted.
That's something we talk about with our coaches and, and work through, and trying to make sure we have all the right records down in place.
It would be very much appreciated. And of course, and I'm going to say this again to the wrestling record board that you have hanging on the, what do we call that? The old gym?
The field house.
Yeah, it should be nice if that could be updated and a nicer product presented to our community. And that's all I have to say about it. Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you, Mr. Enyard. And then for my last item, I am seeking the board's approval for an increase to the substitute teacher pay rate.
Motion to approve. Motion from Ms. Kelly, and I will second that. Any discussion, questions? Hearing none. Mr. Marshall.
Aye.
Dr. Malco.
Absolutely. Very important to have a good substitute teacher rate. Thank you for doing that.
Ms. Talent?
Aye.
Ms. Kelly?
Aye.
And I am an aye. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. And now on to our Director of Primary Education, Dr. Bracy.
Good evening. My only item for this evening is to inform the community about kindergarten enrollment dates. The enrollment window for kindergarten 25, 26 runs from Monday, February 10th through Friday, February 14th of 2025. Enrollment is completely online, and we ask parents to register their children as soon as possible. We will also share the dates for the kindergarten screenings at a later time, but parents will be able to select a slot for screening when they enroll their children online. Any questions? Thank you.
And our Director of Secondary Education, Mrs. Schunnamann.
Thank you. For my first item, I'm seeking the board's approval for the professional leave requests included in your packet.
Still moved.
Motion from Dr. Malco.
Second.
Second from Ms. Talent. Any discussion? Hearing done. Mr. Marshall.
Aye.
Dr. Malco.
Aye.
Ms. Talent?
Aye.
Ms. Kelly?
Aye.
And I am an aye. Motion passes.
Thank you. And for my second item, I am seeking the board's approval for the field trip requests also included in your packet.
Still moved.
Motion from Dr. Malco.
I'll second.
Second from Ms. Kelly. Any discussion? Hearing none. Mr. Marshall.
Aye.
Dr. Malco.
Aye.
Ms. Talent?
Aye.
Ms. Kelly?
Aye.
And I am an aye. Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
And our Director of Student Services, Mrs. Gormala.
Thank you. I have two very patient guests in the audience. Michelle Calhoun, who's a special education teacher at Grimmer, and Joretta Snyder, who is our case conference chair at Grimmer, recently attended the Elevating Education Conference, recently as in just last week. It's a conference sponsored by the Indiana IEP Technical Assistance Center. I've had the ability to attend, and it's one of the best conferences that I think the state puts on. So I asked them to come and share a little bit about what they learned, so take it away, ladies.
That's it. This is a wonderful conference. It's held in Indianapolis. It's usually that first several days right after Thanksgiving. And what I like best about it is that there's a lot of things for everyone. So in my position, I'm dealing with individual education plans, IEPs, I'm doing case conferences. I have to think about student services and their FAP, their Free and Appropriate Public Education. And I attended sessions that had to do with progress monitoring, specially-designed instruction, the roles of the LEA. We call them public agency rep. That's what I do in a conference. And I had so much information that I knew a lot, but it gave me a different perspective. And it was very helpful just to be able to pick the brains of the other people that attended as well as the presenters. So there's some big idea takeaways that I'm going to share with staff. I meet with the special ed staff at Grimmer every month, and I did notes, so I wouldn't forget either. Present levels, so our present levels of academic and functional performance, that's what drives our IEPs. That's the key. You have to have that good foundation. We do a pretty good job overall in terms, I believe, our special ed teachers are great. And we also do a really good job, I feel like, of supporting our students. But we can always get better. We can always make improvements. And so present levels is one of the areas that I took away that I want to tweak a little bit. Progress monitoring, it's data. Everything is data, should be data-driven. All our decisions should be data-driven, and so I got a lot of good information with that. There's two really good websites that were shared, the Iris Center and the Progress, all capital P-R-O-G-R, P-R-O-G-R-E-S-S Center. So it's a lot of tips, webinars, learning modules, things that teachers can use to help them do a better job and support. good job, I feel like, of supporting our students. But we can always get better. We can always make improvements, and so present levels is one of the areas that I took away that I want to tweak a little bit. Progress monitoring, it's data. Everything is data. It should be data-driven. All our decisions should be data-driven, and so I got a lot of good information with that. There's two really good websites that were shared, the Iris Center and the Progress, all capital P-R-O-G-R-E-S-S Center. So it's a lot of tips, webinars, learning modules, things that teachers can use to help them do a better job and support students and have good brainstorming ideas. And then the last one was specially-designed instruction. So specially-designed instruction is what are we going to do to help move that student forward in their goals, in their IEP, in making progress, in the general education curriculum, and just as a student overall. What I didn't realize is that if we're doing specially-designed instruction correctly, that is guaranteeing their FAP, and that's what we have to do. That's what we want to do, is the FAP. So I'm really going to spend a lot of time with the teachers, just kind of getting our feet wet more, expanding how we're coming up with that specially-designed instruction, because it's about what we do, not about what the students do, and I think it will be helpful for everyone all around. So those are my sessions. Michelle, you want to talk about yours?
Now, my sessions were actually completely different from what Jaretta focused on. I've only been a teacher for nine years. Well, in the past nine years, I've realized that a lot has changed in just academic behaviors and just in the classroom in general, so I really wanted to focus on that. When I did this, I attended a session by Amen Ron. Now, he was a very informative, and he gave statistics, and I found that this was really interesting, that in the United States, 15-plus million kids are chronically absent in our country. And in that, the highest absenteeism exceeds 40% for our exceptional needs learners. So in that, he actually has a book called Revolutionary School Culture: The Six Principles in Unlocking Your Children's Hidden Treasure, and he talked about six different principles to help build that gap. So that was something that I wanted to share with my colleagues, and then even actually go a step further and get that book. Another one was by Terrence Scott. It was called Managing Student Behavior: Preventing Escalation in Classroom Management Basics. So in that, I just found it really interesting, because we're dealing with different issues, and special education is a lot harder to deal with, and there's a lot more problematic behaviors. And even this year for me, it's been a tough year. So when I look at some of these and how do I address, I, in the nine years I've been here, there's such a different range, and I'm learning so much more to help these kids where they're at and then meet them and the needs that I need to. And so I just felt like that was just an important session to go to. And then another one that I attended was by Todd Whitney. It was Creating Actively Engaging Classrooms for All Students, and he talked about the 22 Higher Leverage Practices, which I honestly didn't really know too much about, and it was actually by the CEC, that it was approved in 2016, so I did a little bit of research on that. But I just found it interesting that there's, he just gave different techniques to engage all learners in the classroom, which was really important. And then I kind of like wrote, I'll read my little summary. My biggest takeaway from this is to realize that there are so many different resources available for us as educators. Often, we are in our own classroom daily and aren't aware of other resources. I know it is hard to get away from the classroom and write sub-plans for a few days, but I do feel that it was worth it. After the break, I plan on implementing some of the new strategies I have learned. I am looking forward to taking more professional development courses in the future to help me understand ways to be more successful in the classroom. As an educator, and I am always looking for ways to improve my classroom.
Thank you so much, board, for allowing us to do this professional leave and this training. I, it's amazing that that's even something that we can do and that is put on by the state, and you guys see that as valuable for us, and we are very thankful for that. Appreciate it.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you both for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you, ladies.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, before you leave, I didn't catch what school you were at and your roles.
We're at Crimber Middle School.
Oh, wonderful newsletter, Mr. Bowns. Very nice.
Mrs. Calhoun, in the pink, is our fifth-grade resource teacher at Grimmer.
Okay.
And Mrs. Snyder is our case conference chair. So she chairs all of the conferences at Grimmer, and also does some conferences for us at Watson and at Holman.
So she's sort of like a Mary Rebe.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, that's the one person I can connect to. Thank you. Appreciate that.
And I, just to add, Ms. Calhoun is also a fabulous DC trip chaperone.
All right. Our Director of Business Services, Mr. James.
Thank you. My first item is to seek your approval for the donations that were included in your board packet.
Motion to approve. Motion from Ms. Kelly.
Second.
Second from Dr. Malco. Any discussion, questions? Hearing none. Mr. Marshall. Dr. Malco?
Aye.
Ms. Talent?
Aye.
Ms. Kelly?
Aye.
And I am an aye. Motion passes.
Thank you. And my second item is to seek your approval for the equipment purchase noted in your board packet from the extracurricular funds.
Still moved.
Motion from Ms. Talent, and I will second that.
Second.
Yep, Mr. Marshall will second that. Any discussion or questions? Hearing none. Mr. Marshall.
Aye.
Dr. Malco?
Aye.
Ms. Talent?
Aye.
Ms. Kelly?
Aye.
And I am an aye. Motion passes.
Thank you.
And we have no public comments, so we'll move into our board comments and consideration of future agenda items. Mr. Marshall?
I just wanted to say that it is a pleasure being home again, and I hope to be in the board meeting in person very soon.
That's great. Dr. Malco?
That's great to hear, Howard, because I know what it's like to be in that rehab center, and it gets a little bit old after a time period. Wishing everybody a great holiday season. I know it goes an extreme amount of time, but, and we all have different ways to celebrate, so we'll see you in January. Be safe out there.
Ms. Talent?
I just wanted to say that at the Dyer Redevelopment Committee meeting, it was really very, it was refreshing to see how much the town is working on providing things that are good for families, students, and that affects our Dyer Town. So that was really good to see that, and thank you, Dr. Varaco, for your report on the rationale in the redistricting that we will be experiencing.
Thank you. Ms. Kelly?
I'd just like to wish our staff and our students and our families a great holiday vacation. Enjoy.
And I will also echo all of that, wishing everyone a happy vacation, however you may celebrate. So with that, we'll turn it over to Dr. Varaco for board calendar or future activities.
Thank you. We're off for a couple weeks, so we will reconvene here on Monday, January the 6th. That is not a student day, but it is a staff workday, January 6th, 2025.
That hurts.
That's all, thanks.
All right. So we have a motion for adjournment?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
We're adjourned.